Dr. Tupa? Mr. Podolskis?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Sussman?
Here.
Ms. Scheer?
Here.
Here.
Yes, how many learners with my skills and experiences from working together?
We have some really special student recognitions that we're going to give first.
At this point, I want to invite Michael Kemp up to the front. He's going to introduce those students who have achieved the SEAL of Bili literacy.
Good evening, good evening, board, good evening, Dr. Schip, good evening, community members. I'd like to start off today's meeting for to recognize some students graduating seniors who have achieved excellence in language proficiency through the Illinois State SEAL of Bili Literacy Program and the Illinois State Commendations for Bili Literacy. With this distinction, students have certified an advanced, like a higher immediate or advanced level of proficiency in English and a language other than English during their time in Yorkville High School. So I'm going to read their names. If they're present, I'd love for them to stand and be recognized so that we can make sure we acknowledge them. If they can come up, they can come see the board as well. And then we'll meet in the hallway for a group photo for, to make a record of this awesome accomplishment. So thank you. So right now, the students that have received the SEAL of Bili Literacy in Spanish, I'd like to recognize these students. Ashley Angeles. She's here. Sidlali Arteaga. Jelena Auton. Sidlali Correa. Bianca Estrada. Rogirio Fragale. Daisy Gonzalez. Sabrina Juarez. Vanessa Partida. Alexander Rios. Desiree Salas. Osvaldo Salas. And Isaac Salcedo. And now for students that have achieved the Commendations for Bili Literacy. These students have achieved an advanced level of proficiency in English as well as an intermediate low level proficiency in another language, Spanish, German, and French this year, which is great. One other thing I want to mention as well before we finish this reading is this year we have almost tripled the number of recipients as we have last year. So I want to also give a big public recognition and a shout out to the awesome staff at Yorkville High School under the direction of Mrs. Tara Olson, who's the DC back there, and the leadership of Mr. David Travis and the rest of Yorkville High School. So for our accommodation recipients, these are students who receive accommodation in Spanish. Casey Carnathan. Michaelie Clements. Sabine Garcia. Marlene Madera. Dejere Malone. Hannah Willis. And Julia Green. Julia Green is one of two students that actually achieved accommodation in more than one language. Also, she achieved accommodation in Spanish and German. And yes, please. And then finally, our students receiving accommodation in German this year, Colin Cashlake. Sorry if I messed up your name. Did I do it right? Is that right? Kalik, Colin Kalik. I knew that the whole time. Daniel Kotopowski. That one I got right. Daniel also is our second student who achieved in more than one language. He's also certified for the accommodation in French this year, which requires a special recognition because we don't offer French. People aren't French, I'll just oh, and certify for the combination. Ethan Clayton. And Brent Suprenut. Did I get that right too, or no? Suprenut, strike, I'm sorry. Well, if we can get one more public recognition for these students.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. And at this time, I'd like to invite our class director of the high school, Mr. Luke Kinghart, to recognize IHSA Allstate Connor students.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, board, for our recognition tonight. Despite the truncated IHSA sports season, we did have a very successful 2021 year in athletics. And tonight, we're really fortunate to recognize four student athletes that received first team Allstate honors in their respective sports. So first, we have sophomore, this year sophomore, going to be junior, Maddie Reeves. The other three. I'll talk just briefly about each person. Maddie is a representative from our softball team, and she led the Foxes to an unbelievable historic season as a pitcher. We were conference champions, regional champions, sectional champions. And on the way, Maddie is a pitcher compiled a 20 and 4 record, pitched 166.1 innings, had 341 strikeouts, and only 37 walks, a .96 ERA, and threw three no hitters. She and her teammates brought a ton of excitement to the end of the year, and we're really looking forward to her and her teammates and what they can do in the future. So congratulations, first team Allstater, Maddie Reeves. First feeder, from our track team, recent grad and senior when he competed, Ivan Westcott. Ivan kept off an incredible high school career as an Allstater in track and field, and by completing his career with an eighth place finish in the 800 meter run earned him Allstate honors. Congratulations, Ivan Westcott. First feeder, recent grad, senior, Austin Popwell. First team Allstate track and field, and had an outstanding cross-country and track season, capped off by earning Allstate in the 3200 meter run this spring. A big congratulations to both Austin and Ivan. Also important to note, because we have both of these two athletes here, and they're from our distance program, that we didn't get to recognize our boys' cross-country team from the fall, and they had an outstanding season. They were undefeated in their truncated seasons that didn't conclude with the state finals, but they had conference championships, regional championships, and team sectional championships. And both of these two, along with, I heard Callen here, was in their 12 plug-in name in, and all their teammates, just incredible for the work that they did, and representatives on and off of the track and field. So congratulations to the coaches and the families that put in the amount of work that they do. So shameless plug, since you guys are here, great job to our cross-country team as well. Our last Allstater from this spring is not just an Allstater, but he is a state champion, and that is Mr. Kyle Claybaugh. Became the second boys' track and field athlete in school history to win an individual state championship. Kyle captured the state championship in the shot hole with a throw of 18.76 meters. Kyle is one of the hardest workers that I know, and all that work paid off. Congratulations, Kyle, and as a junior, we're looking forward to what you can do next year, and hopefully see you back here in the same fashion next, next school year. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you to the board for the recognition tonight, thank you to the coaching staffs. I know you guys are here, kind of hidden away, but for all your efforts, and then to the parents and family members of these athletes and all our student athletes that competed this year. And again, thanks to the school board for the recognition. We really appreciate you recognizing these athletes and their teams. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you, everyone, for coming here tonight. We have 10 public comments, but before we take that, Dr. Schip just wants to share something with all of you. We just want to take, first, we want to make sure we give you the floor, but we also have come up with a way that we want to make sure all of our stakeholders have an opportunity to be able to voice their opinions. This district was one of the few districts in the entire state that opened last year. Every parent, the opportunity to make a choice. We tried to meet our staff where they were at. We tried to accommodate everybody that we could. We did it collaboratively. We did it together. We have some of the most tenacious, courageous staff members that work here, that they were fearful as well, and they did what was right for kids. We're going to do the same thing over and over again, because that's what we do. We know several districts around us have made some decisions, and we just feel like we're not going to make these decisions without you. So Dr. Schip is going to share some information, and then we're going to make sure that we also do give the floor to the stakeholders that took the time to come here tonight as well. And I speak for the entire board to know how much we appreciate all of you. We appreciate your kids. These are our kids, and we love them to death, and we want to make sure that they have every opportunity to succeed. We fought very hard with IHSA to make sure that those student athletes had their seasons, and so we're going to continue to do it. So I'm going to give the floor to Dr. Schip, who's going to share some things, and we want to make sure that we have the floor for the folks that want to come.
Thank you, Dr. Burks, and welcome, everybody. Again, on behalf of the Board of Education Administration, we also are grateful for your presence and your voice. As a community member of almost 19 years now, four kids have all gone through our schools. The youngest just graduated. I understand the perspective of parents and understand the perspectives of community members, and I have a great deal of love in my heart for this district, for our community, and for our students. I'm going to read a statement on behalf of the board, and then we'll move into the next phase of it. So tonight, the Yorkville CUSD 115 Board of Education will continue the discussion regarding the impact of COVID-19 mitigation strategies on the 2122 school year. A board vote on this topic is not on the agenda this evening, but approval of a plan is expected to be finalized at the August 9th Board of Education meeting. We would like to state publicly our intention to form a collaborative working group with the first meeting being held on July 27th. The purpose of this group is to bring together diverse voices, experts, and perspectives to huddle all these issues. This group will be charged with making an overall recommendation with myself to the Board of Education on August 9th. To ensure all voices are heard, we are seeking representatives from a diverse group of stakeholders, medical, legal experts, local officials, teachers, parents, staff, community members, administrators, and board representation. In addition, a survey will be deployed going out on Wednesday to all families in the district as well as our staff, so they have an opportunity to express their voices, as Dr. Burks has shared that we have in the past. We are blessed to have been one of the few districts that kept our doors open last year. We are grateful for the opportunity once again to tackle our upcoming school year challenge with the same thoughtfulness, care, empathy, and collaborative spirit to guide our next steps, keeping our kids and our staff at the forefront. There is an update on the agenda tonight, but it's just that, an update. The purpose of this evening's discussion is to gain a better understanding of the recommendations by national, state, and local officials, as well as how those recommendations affect the well-being of kids and the board's fiduciary responsibilities to all of us, the stakeholders. We acknowledge that the issues involving the pandemic, including the wearing of masks and vaccinations, have been polarized. As a board, we too struggle with how best to balance health protocols, productive learning environment, and financial risk. We believe that prevention and mitigation strategies are key to the overall health and safety of our employees, students, and the community. However, to what extent these strategies could and should be implemented needs further review. We also must consider how limiting these strategies may have severe legal and financial implications on the district. We ask that as the community trusted us to work through the pandemic and school your plans last year, you again, as community members, provide us with the patience, support, and time necessary to continue our work with administration to make the best possible decisions for our district this school year. As on behalf of the Board of Education, you hear there will be an update later in the agenda, the third or fourth item in the agenda tonight. It'll be basically an overview of the newly released CDC IDPH guidelines, as well as, again, a revisit of the next steps that we will be holding as a district. I have reached out to a number of parents already. We met with the Kendall County Health Department this afternoon. We are securing legal experts, our insurance individuals, and other community officials to come together on the 27th. It'll be an invited group of 25 to 30. The entire forum will be streamed, so those who aren't here, obviously, can be part of the discussion, to listen and know what's going on and hear the discussions that are occurring. From that, I expect that I'm going to narrow that group down to about 12 working group members, knowing that if we can't come to a consensus or can't come to, you know, a decision of sorts by the end of that night, we're going to need to come back together and getting the voices of faculty and parents and community members and experts together to do that before the night that's certainly within our, we believe, realistic and will occur. And then after the night, we expect the board vote on a decision, and then communication will go out and attempt to the rest of the community. If you know anything about this board, if you know anything about this district administration, we are transparent. I've had dozens and dozens of emails. I'm getting back as many as I can, as quickly as I can. There's nothing we're hiding. There's, there's, there's no decision made. I have no direction that I intend to go right now. I truly want it to be a collaborative effort, just like the partnership we had last school year. We did, we were successful because our community was successful, because of all of you, because of your kids, because of our community members, and our wonderful staff. That's why. And we need that again. We need to come together. I don't care what else we go through. I don't care what all the districts are doing. I learned from them. I read about them. I understand. I'm not naive, but I want what's important for us. If we listened to everyone last year, we would have closed our doors in others. We didn't, because you didn't want that, and we didn't want that. And we proved to everybody we could do it. So I just ask for that patience, grace, and collaboration to work together. That's what I'm asking for, and for people to fill out the survey when we send it. So at this time, I'll turn over to Dr. Burks, and we will call our speakers to come to the podium.
Timothy Gleason.
Hi. Hello. Take this out there. It's all right. First of all, congratulations to our athletes. Kyle, what's going on, man? I didn't know you were a state champion. How are you guys doing? Maddie, three no hitters. It took the Cubs 40 years to do three no hitters. She got it done in one season, so congratulations. Also want to say thank you to the board here. I sent Dr. Schip an email a few weeks ago. I said, "I'm always proud to tell my friends and family that my children attend Yorkville schools." And I bragged that in spite of state restrictions, numerous obstacles, our schools were open for the entirety of the prior school year. So I thank you for that. Also want to thank you for the increase in home prices. Lots of families moving to Yorkville. You guys are certainly part of it. There's nobody that says, "I want to move to a community where all the schools are shut down, and I don't have a choice in health decisions for my child." So a lot of people want to live here. Really appreciate that. So my name's Tim Gleason. I'm a Yorkville resident father of three children from Yorkville schools. I believe Yorkville parents should have the freedom to decide whether their children wear a mask. Won't be wearing them for the record, but if other parents want to, they deserve that choice as well, and I will ask my children to respect that. It's equally important that this applies to both vaccinated and unvaccinated students. And the statistics bear this out. COVID is not an imminent threat to our children. Six pediatric deaths in Illinois for children under the age of 20 since COVID, that's exactly the same amount as in the flu season prior. Nor is COVID an imminent threat to the Kendall County community. The seven-day average currently sits at four. In a county with 129,000 residents, including 94,000 adults, we now have 64,000 people plus that are vaccinated. So I think when ISPE gave authority to local boards, they may have even had Yorkville in mind, like, there's not much happening here. Why should we force kids to wear masks in a community like this? I don't normally say, "ISPE does a good job," but in this case, appreciate their autonomy. So I started a petition to eliminate the mask mandate. Many people here in the crowd, kind enough to sign it, many wearing black, in support of that. So I was hoping to get 100, maybe 200 signatures. As of today, I have 536 signatures of people. They're requesting not only that you give parents the option, but also that there will be consequential actions, and it's important to know, we're definitely willing to work with the board, but this is an important issue for the community. I think it's also safe to say that this is just the beginning of more community involvement. I think this is one issue, and you'll, and I think that's a good thing. I think you'll all agree, the more parents are involved in the schooling of their children. So just one quick thing, we've had stories from this past year, struggles, simple things like just forgetting to send that green checkmark to our kids, to more serious things like respiratory complications, bacterial vomiting that appear likely due to masking. Some of these have been documented and submitted to the school. But I'm here to say there's also an opportunity cost. This is very important. Since 2010, we've seen an increase in anxiety and mental health issues in our students, and studies have shown that COVID has only exacerbated this problem. In fact, my wife is a counselor at Oswego East High School. Believe it or not, in 2010, she used to advise students on what colleges to attend and what classes to take. Now it's just one mental health crisis after another, and I'm sure you've seen it in your school. So let's stop talking about masks, okay? Let's look at the other issues, okay? I don't want to be here talking about this. So in conclusion, this is not a community based on fear. Yorkville is a community of courage. Courage, that's a lesson I want my kids to learn. So I'm asking you to do the right thing, and on August 9th, both to give parents the option, both vaccinated and unvaccinated children, to decide whether their children are masked, wears a mask at school. Thank you very much.
Don Rainey.
My name is Don Rainey. I'm a parent in the district, and I have 14 years of professional experience in the district as well. I want to thank the board for all of your hard work this past year as well. As a parent professional in the 2020, 2021 school year, I feel it's important to share what I witnessed regarding children and masks, and I work in a major rebuild. With regard to masks, children would complain that they could not breathe well. Children were scolded by staff for having masks under their nose. I witnessed children yell at for choosing to have their masks to reach in while out every set. Children and staff repeatedly touched and fiddled with their masks. Some children's masks were filthy, others were soaked from chewing on it throughout the day. I saw one child drop their mask on the bathroom floor then pick it up and put it back on her feet. I saw children with tears in their eyes because they had to be asked multiple times to repeat their answers because they were inaudible with their masks. Additionally, there were multiple times I saw children told that their answers were wrong, when in fact, they were correct, so the teacher wasn't able to hear the child correctly. And lastly, I'll share the story of our first waiter who asked me if she could take down her face mask so she could show me her smile. She had such a big smile to show me and was so proud to display it. You can't dispute the fact that denying children the ability to see their teachers in pure spaces and forcing children to rebreather toxic and failed air and carbon dioxide is severely impeding their development and health. Many doctors have spoken out about the harm of masks on children. Dr. Margaret Gleason, consultant neurologist and neurophysiologist with a PhD in pharmacology with special interest in neuropsychology, environmental medicine, neural regeneration, and neural plasticity. States, and I quote, "The rebreathing of our exhaled air will, without a doubt, create oxygen deficiency and flooding of carbon dioxide." Children's brains are incredibly active and are thirsty for oxygen. Oxygen deprivation inhibits the development of the brain. The brain needs oxygen to function, and we do not need a clinical study for that. This is simple, indisputable physiology. Oxygen deprivation damages every single organ. Medicine is not a one-size-fits-all approach. One cannot mandate a medical intervention for the masses without causing harm. Parents know the medical needs and will be with their children best. Parents have the right and should be given the right to make informed decisions for their children. The CDC, Illinois Department of Public Health, and the Illinois State Board of Education provide guidance and recommendations only. They do not make laws. These entities call for health equity. According to the CDC, health equity is achieved when everyone has the opportunity to be as healthy as possible and can maintain and manage physical and mental health. Forcing people into medical interventions does not maintain health equity. Masks and all medical interventions must be a choice. Staff and children should not be discriminated against. They should not be placed into two social classes, those who wear a mask and those who do not, those who take an injection and those who do not. Children will be bullied, pressured, and ostracized should this be allowed. Illness is expected to increase this fall and winter. Fear has caused more harm by causing increased anxiety, suicide, and depression in our children than the virus itself. People are not forced to exercise, to eat healthy, and to avoid drugs to keep others healthy. The opposite is true as well. People should not be forced into medical interventions that could potentially cut us apart in order to protect others. Please be medical intervention a big choice. Thank you.
Andrew Shaw.
All right. School Board members, President Burks, and Superintendent Schip, thank you for your service to our district. The timely commitment of public servants is often a thankless task. Certainly today, we appreciate your attention to the important matters encroaching on the lives of all our students. My name is Andy Shaw, and I am a proud father and product of the 115 school system. My name is Andy Shaw and I am a proud father and product of the 115 school system. Yountons of this district ultimately prepared me for an extremely rigorous and challenging post-secondary environment, ultimately earning a bachelor's and master's degree. I appreciate the work that the board and faculty went into establishing a base for the work ethic that would ultimately forward my future. Recently, I am appreciative of 115 for another reason. In the face of uncertainty and numerous challenges, district administration, school board, faculty, and staff came together in what I can only imagine was hundreds of hours upon hours of planning to develop protocols and procedures for distance learning, but also in-person learning amid the COVID-19 pandemic. You did this in collaboration with Kendall County Health Department officials and took a courageous step to put students first during this very critical time. Others across the state were not so eager to rise to this challenge. For this, I sincerely thank you for your effort to provide in-person learning for 115 students. And now, we are on the precipice of another challenge. Mask guidelines for the 2021-22 school year. The state-issued mask mandate has been a violation of personal autonomy from its inception and does little to mitigate the spread of this virus. The Illinois Department of Public Health has gone on record in state-issued training manuals for nursing homes, citing that anything less than an N95 mask is ineffective in mitigating the spread of COVID-19. Current data released by the Kendall County Health Department presents solid evidence that mask optional policies are well overdue, specifically citing statistics on high vaccination rate along with an extremely low positivity rate among all demographics. These statistics are certainly indicative of an extreme reduced risk for all. However, I do understand that there are those who may be apprehensive about an optional mask policy. A brief anecdote to potentially assuage some fears. A week ago today, I was in another school board meeting where it voted unanimously to invoke an optional mask-wearing for their district. It was interesting to hear the deliberations before their vote as one board member asked, "Aren't we putting the cart before the horse here? Do we have a plan in place in case this optional mask policy doesn't work?" Unlike that district, I was reassured by the path already pioneered by 115 to ensure mitigation processes and procedures have already been established within this district. You were courageous enough to collaborate with community members laying the foundational processes and safeguards to ensure in-person learning in the face of uncertainty. Now, I'm asking you to take the logical next step and keep consistent with your decision-making processes, to collaborate with local health officials and work toward a mask optional policy for District 115 for the 2021-22 school year to pave a way back to normalcy for all students. Thank you for your time.
Kelly Switt.
Hi. I'm a first-timer here to school board meetings and any type of public meeting. I don't even go to a homeowner's association. No matter how much my community likes to fight about having sheds in their backyard, I still don't come. But today felt like an occasion where I needed to come. While I can appreciate that this has turned into a very politicized matter, what my focus has always been and always will be is on my children, their education, which is what you are here to do. You're here to help focus on academics, not to have to make decisions around public health, and for the children to have a safe learning environment. And I will say that I am, like many of the parents that have already come up and probably will continue after I exit, I am so proud of what this school district did last year. I have three children, they all go to Bristol Bay. Shout out to Dr. Spalazo because she did an amazing job. And we should be thankful to not only all of the administration, but also the teachers and what they went through this past year. I'll tell you, every single parent-teacher conference, I cried because I felt such empathy for what you're having to deal with. My kids were in the hybrid program. They did fantastic. We didn't have any issues with any of the health and safety, which we were very concerned when the school year first started because you just didn't know. I thought the school did a fantastic job around communicating what was happening and keeping my children safe and keeping me aware, even as I had teachers that went out because they were quarantined because of potential risk exposure, having shifts in our schedule from afternoon to then morning because of attendance rates. I thought that the whole team did a fantastic job. And in fact, my children accelerated last year. They exceeded what they probably would have gotten in the classroom had it been just a normal school year with the regular number of kids within the classroom. And at no point did I ever have a fear for their health or safety based on what was instituted. And so as I look to what comes into the next school year, I think the focus needs to continue to be on their academics and the support of our teachers and doing what our tax dollars pay for the school board to do and for the staff of the school district to do, which is to focus on the children and to focus on the academics. And while I appreciate there is a lot of opinion and a lot of vitriol around whether we should have masks or not have masks, to me, following the guidelines as it's instituted, I'm not sure why there is a debate and why we're taking time from our teachers and our administrators to talk about things that it isn't really your job to set guidelines for. So I can appreciate that everyone believes that this is a personal choice, but every day, our children have to follow guidelines in regards to what they dress in, unless we're going to change that and say that our daughters can now wear short skirts and they can wear spaghetti strap, you know, tank tops. I don't know why we're not fighting about that being an infringement on personal freedom. I don't... I think that we should be looking at what the guidelines really are from our public health, from the CDC, from the Illinois School Board, and move forward and focus on what we're here to do, which is to help our children be the best possible adults in the future. Thank you.
Joey Johnson.
Hi, Joey Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I had to make a quick goodbye and somebody threw up my name.
And I know you, so I should have said your name.
Sorry. I'm just kidding, I'm ready to. Anyway. I feel that in here, and a few people have already stood up here and said, actually, last school year, I was asked to kind of share a video, if you will, of just our thoughts and feelings and my family about how this school year had went. And I could not be any more impressed with the teachers, the staff, the administration. I don't... I simply cannot imagine having your jobs and having to make such big decisions and affect so many people and knowing that you're never going to make anybody happy. I mean, I hate that at my house just at dinnertime. I can't imagine community school people, you know, who you're trying to cater to. So that said, I did prepare a big, long speech. I'm just kind of got to speak from my heart here. Back in February, my family lost my aunt, who was probably one of my favorite people in the whole world to COVID. I was actually in Kentucky with her when she took her last breath. It was horrible. Horrible for my entire family, as you can imagine. And I know this probably happened to many people and their families as well. But it really sparked a lot of conversation in my house with my kids. I have once been through Yorkville schools and is graduated, and I have a daughter who will be a sophomore. Those who do know me, I'm very social. I talk to everybody. If you see me in the grocery store, you might want to run because I talk to a lot. But we really have to focus, I feel, on their emotional and mental health. My daughter's great. She doesn't have those issues per se, but she has friends who do. And I kind of have always been that family where people, kids, have come over and sat at my table and discussed with me, you know, how they feel about whatever. I was a counselor actually to the education department for fifteen years, so that's probably part of the reason why. But wearing a mask and continuing for them to wear a mask all day in the school is causing so much anxiety, so much depression. Substance abuse is on the rise. I mean, I could go on and on. I mean, this is just a bigger issue. And my fear as a parent, setting her forth into the world, and my son too, when they get to college, I mean, how are they going to know how to read social cues as well as they should, as I did, as most of us have? You know, how are they going to really be able to relate to their peers and to their teachers? You know, if you're not seeing the expression on their faces or their smile when they give a correct answer, or, you know, the inquisitive look on their face, how are we truly educating them? I mean, it's more than just pure academics, right? They have to be able to go out into the world and function as adults someday, hopefully, and, you know, be able to communicate effectively. So I'm asking you all to please consider unmasking our kids as well. I just feel that for so many reasons, it's really the most healthy option for them. And I just, I don't want to see their emotional role be stunted, you know, any further than it already has been. Which obviously is nobody's fault here, but, you know, the pandemic is going to carry on and we're going to have to deal with this for years. We can't keep our masks for years. So, anyway, I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Todd Bro. Melissa Tignoli.
Hello, my name is Melissa Tignoli. I'm a parent here in the office of 115. I have two elementary-age children. I'm one of the only people in this room wearing a mask. And I was not going to speak tonight. I came to listen. But I felt it was important. I hear a lot of the anti-mask discussion and people who are vehemently opposed to masks. I get it. Everybody's entitled to their opinion. I do feel the anti-mask group is very loud. There are families that do want to have masks in their school. We are all adults, so you can tell, you know, who's loud in the room. You just boo people while they're speaking and trying to be adults and have discussions. It's not very appropriate, you know, to boo people while we're at a board meeting. I find that completely disrespectful. So, let me go on. So, in the 2020-21 school year, I had my children e-learning the entire school year. They're little kids. They're not meant to be home. They're not meant to be away from their friends and their teachers. And it was tough. My goodness. But they succeeded. Kids are so resilient. My girls are beyond excited to go back to school this year. I am sending them back. I have a child with a compromised immune system. I didn't have a choice. When this started, we had to keep them safe. And the school district, everyone did a great job letting these kids come back to school. But it was safe because there were, you know, there were mandates in place and mitigation efforts. COVID's not over. And if we lift these, you know, mitigation efforts, what's going to happen? You can start to see stuff, you know, the different camps, you know, outside. People are catching up still at these camps. And the mitigation efforts did make a difference. That's why we wrapped it last year and were able to give people choices. I'm afraid if we pull that back, it's going to be a challenge, especially to a family like me who has taken measures. I don't like not seeing people. I don't like not being able to take my kids out and have, you know, fun like they're used to. It's been a really challenging year. But like I said, I don't have staff. I didn't prepare a whole thing. I'm just a mom who wants to keep my kiddo safe. And her doctor said, you know, she needs to be masked and she needs to be protected. I'm just... The anti-mask discussion is so loud. And there are families in this district that still want masks. I am asking that you follow the CDC recommendations. The American Academy of Pediatrics came out with their report today saying that anybody in schools over the age of two should be wearing a mask, vaccinated or unvaccinated. The CDC guidelines are a little bit different. I don't have the metrics, I don't have the numbers, I don't have the Kendall County numbers. All I'm asking is that you help me and other families like me get my kids back to school. They need to be in person, they need that interaction. So, that's it. If you'd like to do one, congratulations.
Matt Dennison.
Hi, Matt Dennison. I'm the parent of two students in the district. I'm here today to share the story of my twelve-year-old son. He is hearing impaired, he wears hearing aids in both ears. And we put him in a room where everyone is masked and he is lost. Absolutely lost. Your voice is muffled. You can't read facial expressions, you can't see lips. And by the time he catches on to what was said, everybody's on the next conversation. So for that reason, we wanted to stay... We wanted to keep him at home last year so he wouldn't have to experience that. But he wanted to go. He wanted to see his friends, he wanted to be around other kids. So we wanted to give it a shot. He lasted two weeks. He would come home lost, he would come home frustrated. He told us that by the time he understood what his teacher said, they were already on to the next subject. So he came home. He did the rest of the year doing e-learning. And for that, he's really behind. So we've seen I had to work extra hard to get caught up this year. And so that's why I implore you to make it optional for vaccinated and unvaccinated so children like my son aren't kept in the dark for a school year. If it is going to be a masked year, I think school would do more harm to him than good. And we would have a decision to make at that point. So, you know, I heard the opposition in the room. And the lady spoke before me. And I feel you completely where you're coming from, and I understand that. But each of our... An individual's rights tend to where another individual's rights begin. We each have a... Everyone has the opportunity and they can wear a mask. Your children can wear a mask. But you don't have the right to require face covering for another individual that just does not agree with that. You just don't.
And then last is Andrea Pochek.
Probably will be called first after this, so. But anyway, I sent Dr. Schimpf an email earlier. And this is just the email I sent him. I want to thank you for that phone call. He called me last week because of a Facebook post. And so this is what I wanted to say. I just wanted to take a minute, thank you for the call the other day. It means a lot to me that you wanted to understand where my comments were coming from and to reassure me that Yorkville had not taken an official stance yet. "We live in a world where information, true and false, is in abundance. It takes common sense and experience to sort through it all. I definitely appreciate the common sense approach that Yorkville took in the 2020-2021 school year. You were leaders in staying open. I have praised Y115 since day one." And just a little side note, I am from Caneeland. And my friends struggled big time last year with their school. And all I did was keep telling them. You know, I told them... Told their families that, you know, I told them, "When they're disappointed, take a leap of faith and move to Yorkville. There is no doubt you did the best you could with what you had and it worked." With about a month left to go last school year, we made the choice to go back to e-learning because the whole mask rule was not applicable anymore. With the cases still out there, while we were all masked, it was time to start researching what we were really doing here. We all had what we... In my house, we all had what we believed to be COVID-19 virus back in 2019. And throughout all of 2020, we're untouched. Same for 2021 thus far. So our own immune systems and our immunity should be speaking for itself right now. So, our own pediatrician warned us about mask-wearing for lengths of time. One thing she mentioned was acidic blood levels, which promote an environment for cancer. There have been others that talk about bacterial lung infections. There is also a psychological aspect that you are challenging your faith by succumbing to fear. I could go on and on, but I think you get the gist of it. Ever since Dr. Fauci's emails were made public, where he states they don't really work, it is hard to accept anything that he says that's true. Also, as far as having unvaccinated kids masked versus vaccinated kids unmasked, that will be a nightmare of division. So many cases of heart complications, not to mention actual death from the vaccine, are reasons to wait. My children are not an experiment. There should be consent, not a mandate, for this vaccine. That isn't even really a vaccine. It's experimental gene therapy for emergency use. It's experimental gene therapy for emergency use for illness that has 99.9% survival rate and medicines proven to cure it. We live in what is known as a free country, and the choice should always be ours. If we lose that choice, we lose our freedom. If we lose our freedom, we lose everything America stands for. Choosing to take a stand to not participate in a system that wants to mandate masks is where parents gain their freedom back. It's 100% worth it. Please continue being a leader with common sense. And thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have some updates, as Dr. Shipp talked about. So I know you all have really busy lives, but maybe you want to stay and listen to that update. And once you receive that survey, please make sure that you fill out your responses so we can get all that data to this working committee. Thank you again. We appreciate, I know it takes a certain level of courage to speak in front of people. So we really do truly appreciate all of you. And we'll try to do our absolute best to serve our kids. So we have committee reports that we didn't. Do we have a committee? We did not. It's July, so we don't have a business meeting, so we have no committee reports. So on to the consent agenda, please. And we need that entire motion read. Please.
Approve the minutes of the June 28, 2021 Board of Education meeting. June 28, 2021 Executive Session. The Activities Fund Report for June 2021. Final Bills and Claims for June 2021 in the amount of $1,438,691.05. And the Bills and Claims for July 2021 in the amount of $1,627,600.15. And Destroyed, the September 23, 2019 Executive Session Record.
Moved in second. Additional comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Katsula?
Yep.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Berms?
Yes. Treasurers' Reports. Okay. So results through the end of June were very strong, as the board's probably already seen. Our revenue was $15 million above where we had budgeted. The biggest piece of that is a $9.4 million working cash bond that we issued that hadn't been contemplated at the time that the budget was built. But we did see favorability across most other line items. We had about $2.7 million of favorability in a levy. Typically, we collect 50% in a given year. And this year, we saw 52%. So that was just uncharacteristic. I'm not sure what drove that. But that, that result has been, again, over $2.5 million in favorability. We did get the one additional state payment. We budgeted typically with three, and we received four payments. So that was another $1 million. Transition fees, as somebody spoke about earlier, were very strong this year with all of the building that we had in Yorkville. So that was about another $2.6 million. We had another $1 million in federal income. That was primarily driven by about $700,000 in summer fee service revenue. So we didn't anticipate that we were going to continue to offer free lunch to everyone. So that was a significant source of revenue, which will now continue. We'll adjust our budget this year because lunch will be free again for this upcoming school year. So that's good news for all of our students who are taking advantage of that. And so that's on the revenue side. And then on the expense side, it was about $5 million of favorability. And that was driven primarily by our purchase services. Our transportation was about $2 million favorable, which we had been reporting to the board that that was kind of our expectation. And that was just based on the learning models that we had, particularly in the area of special education, where some of our out-of-district schools were not open. Therefore, we didn't do that transportation. We will see a corresponding reduction in that revenue in the upcoming school year because of the one-year lag in terms of when we get in touch for that. So we were talking about that when we were talking about the FY '22 budget. And then we did add a year of about $1.6 million favorable in the benefits area. And that reserve that we continue to build because we're self-funded. So those are kind of the highlights. But if there's anything else or any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
We are still waiting for transportation reimbursement from the state.
For?
Our transportation expenses.
Yes. I mean, we will be, we will be filing a claim in August so that we know what our next, what revenue we'll get next year. We do still have, it was one payment. We already received that payment in early July. So we're whole now for, you know, prior year, but we will know. So by the time we do the budget in September, we'll be able to know what that, you know, what revenue you can get to pay for transportation for next year. This is one of the first, we've received all four payments. No, actually, since we've been here, we, one year we received three, one year we received five, one year we received four. So it's been somewhat inconsistent. And we've always had that concern that we won't necessarily receive four. So to be conservative, we, you know, we budgeted three. But so, yes, in the time that I've been here, I think it's been three, five, four, four. It's ranged. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Treasury report is presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katsula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Berms?
Yes. On to new business, remote learning program. You know what? I am, we're going to move the agenda a little bit. We'll put the COVID mitigations and update first, and then we'll move the rest below. So in case people have to leave.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Baughman is going to pull up a brief presentation. I'll go through it fairly quickly. A lot of it's review. Certainly, a lot of it is the board is probably aware of, and probably the public is aware of. But more so, just to give you an update from a CDC, IDPH, and State Board of Education perspective, as well as, probably more importantly, where we're headed as a district, the next steps. So back on the 9th of July, the CDC came out, really giving guidance in those four areas. Talked about the importance of in-person as a priority. Talked about mitigation layers and preventative strategies for school districts. Obviously, some recommendations, and then giving, really granting more local control decision-making than has been done in the past. As the board is aware, the State Board of Education and IDPH have typically followed suit with CDC. So once CDC guidelines come out, then typically, we have IDPH guidelines that come out, and then the State Board follows suit. We are still waiting for IDPH FAQs to come out. One of the reasons, too, that we didn't want to jump to any decisions, too, is because we always wait for IDPH FAQs to follow suit. They were supposed to be out last week. Now we're here, they're coming out tomorrow. So we will be looking for those. So based upon CDC guidelines, you can certainly read what IDPH came out to say. This is taken verbatim from them, as well as then what the State Board of Education has shared in regards to mask-wearing and mask vaccinations. So some of the key significant takeaways from our guidance, as I shared. In-person instruction has been the priority, is the priority. They did come out and say masks should be worn indoors by individuals aged two and older who are not fully vaccinated. Physical distance of three feet between students within classrooms, combined with indoor mask-wearing by people who are not fully vaccinated, to reduce transmission risk. And I think the physical distancing, certainly, we'll talk about that later, though, is something that we're, to the extent possible. And you'll see areas like the cafeteria. You'll see guidelines on transportation, classrooms. Certainly, less restrictive than it has been this past school year, which for us will be, from an instructional standpoint, a very positive direction we're headed. And then obviously, continue with prevention strategies. Most, if not all, that we have been doing all of last year and will continue to do with some of the questions that still remain out there with testing and with mask-wearing. And then local data and metrics, looking at transmission rates, looking at community spread, looking at student positivity rates. And we spent a lot of time, as this community is aware, last year, looking at our internal numbers. I got a lot of flack from a lot of people across the state of how we are staying open. But we kept looking at our student numbers. We kept looking at our staff numbers and the percentage of people here. And we felt they were low, and we were going to continue forward based upon those. So I don't want to dismiss that. And as we talked to the Health Department earlier today, as we met, as I talked to IDPH earlier last week, we can't, we also, as a board and as an administration, we can't forget last year, the way in which we got through that and the metrics that we also look at with local data. So I don't want to put everything on. We have to look at state numbers or all of Yorkville, or all kind of county numbers. So we are going to continue to look at our local data and our student population and our staff population, regardless of the decision that comes in the fall. So that will continue, and certainly something that CDC is supportive of. Additional guidance that was provided. They were very adamant that all students on buses will continue to wear masks for transportation purposes. You see the physical distancing, to the extent possible, for unvaccinated staff and students. In general, when they're outside, masks are not required. Normal food service operations may resume. It's something that we're going to have to look at internally, how to best go about our food service, whether that's to continue in classrooms on some level or use that as an alternative measure, mitigation measure. And then certainly, during lunchtimes, not required physical distancing for those fully vaccinated, for staff and students. They came out and shared, from a prevention aspect, if we want to limit transmission within the schools by looking at, you know, the nine different strategies on the right. Most, if not all, is something that we were successful in all of last year. And I think our conversation is going to have to be surrounded around a couple of these. Because the other ones, we're going to continue on. We're not, and we have, last year, the board was very supportive. We hired eight to 10 additional custodians. We cleaned buildings almost hourly, cleaned bathrooms hourly. That's going to continue this year. So regardless of which direction we're going, the mitigation strategies you see here, other than when we talk about testing and surveillance testing and the masking piece, we're moving forward with those. As the CDC has come out to share, slowly, gradually, reduce mitigation layers and see what the data does, and then move forward. But we see from a cleaning standpoint, ventilation, respiratory hygiene, all those things, there's no reason to stop doing those. We have a structure in place. It's been successful. We've seen results. We have the resources to do it. You just heard Vinnie talk about financially, we're sound. There's no reason we shouldn't continue to go in this direction from a preventative aspect. Our conversations will continue around the other areas. Just another look at, kind of the slide that I just shared. The bottom of this triangle are, for us as a district, those non-negotiables that we're going to continue to focus on to minimize any transmission or outbreaks. The middle piece there, in the green, is what we're working on in terms of looking at how are we going to monitor the things that happen within the district? How are we going to look at our, how are we going to continue to screen, you know, screen at the beginning of the day with our checkmarks? How are we going to deal with those kids that have symptoms, those staff that have symptoms in the school day? And then obviously, the top is the, again, the questions that we have yet to determine answers to. As we looked at last year, these are some of the key areas of monitoring our metrics. We spent a great deal of time looking at our weekly new youth cases, not only in Yorkville's schools, but across Kendall County. We looked at, obviously, the hospital admissions. And then we looked at our number of individuals tested positive by each school and made that very transparent and public and known on our website and sent notices home every week or every day, whether it was quarantines or their positive cases. That will continue, at least our recommendation, will continue as we look at our local health data. This is just another look at, where we look at our minimal, minor, and substantial indicators. We're going to look at district data. We're going to look at community transmission data. And we're going to look at vaccination data. And again, this is all public information that's available to us and that we present to our community. So from a mask-wearing, the general recommendations for those that are not vaccinated is to wear masks at all times while indoors, but it can be removed with proper distancing. And then vaccinated individuals, no mask required inside or out. As the group has shared, as the board is well aware, universal masking is not required, but recommended if, I mean, you look at the five different bullet points. When you look at the community spread, when you look at transmission rates, when you look at those students who are not at the age where vaccination is available or if there's certainly a new variant. From a distancing standpoint, I guess the key phrase, to the extent possible. And we have found, as we're measuring classrooms now, if you were to go back to pre-COVID classroom distances, most kids' heads are three feet apart. So we feel very comfortable, even those class sizes that we're at, 29 or 30, pre-COVID classrooms and that size classrooms, they're about three feet apart. You know, our teachers, they miss the days of, you know, the kidney tables and the carpets back out and sitting around with small group instruction. So there is certainly great value, we know, in that. And as we talk about any learning gaps coming back, we talk about the academic focus that some of our parents have spoken about. That has to be a significant piece of our work as we come back in the fall. We just don't know how wide that gap is going to be. And certainly, there's going to be a lot of need to look at different measures to increase student academic achievement and growth. So that distancing is going to be a significant piece of it. And making sure our teachers have the resources to be able to do that within the classroom. So we are in the process of making sure our classrooms are able to accommodate that as we come back, but also looking at, do we have space for quarantine rooms? Like we had last year, two rooms in each of the buildings where we put kids who are symptomatic and such like that. And again, if distancing is harder to achieve, then we have to look at more preventative layers, as you can see there. So from a timeline standpoint, in fairness and transparency, we're on the 19th. That's tonight. Our survey will go out Wednesday. We're asking for it back by Monday from our parents, as well as our staff. We will host our forum at 6:30 and right here on the 27th, finalizing those participants for that and then streaming it live for our community members to watch. We come back for our board committee meeting, if not before, unless there's a special meeting. We'll meet again on the 9th. And then we would be ready to have a correspondence and communication going out to everybody after that. As I've preached over and over, these are the areas of great discussion yet. Certainly, I think, as the community has shown up tonight and the feedback that I've been given through emails and our tip line and everything else, it's the considerations about masking, it's the physical distancing and screening and testing that we're going to bring more structure to. Our health coordinator, Malin Lasky, has been working with the high school, working with the Health Department and talking about what tests are available, what we want to do with athletes, high-capex sports. So those are all in the works right now, formulating plans and opportunities. Certainly, our distancing, we're looking at each of the classrooms and our section numbers and being able to provide, make sure that we're comfortable with our distancing, which I think we are, as well as our lunch periods and any other learning opportunity and instruction in the school day for that to occur. A different picture of some of the things that we have to get accomplished. We are waiting back for legal counsel to give us an opinion statement. We are getting information from our insurance company from that angle. I'm never going to misrepresent what our legal rights or legal ramifications are one way or the other, or for that insurance. If insurance is an issue, we're going to tell our community and the board, insurance is not an issue. If it's not a legal matter, it's not a legal matter and where our exposure is. But I think as a, as a board, you have all taken an oath. Your oath has been about student health, safety, and well-being. You've taken a fiduciary responsibility oath through our community and our taxpayers. And I think for you to have that information, the best information available, is only right before you make or take a vote. Again, I don't know what the other 50 districts who have made the decision already have done and what law firm they're using and what insurance program they're using. And frankly, that's, again, not my concern. My concern is 115, our taxpayer. My concern is 115, our taxpayers, and making sure that we're, we know where we stand regardless of the decision we make. Doesn't mean we make one decision or the other, it just means we know what we're getting into before a decision is made. Last year, we made decisions that weren't popular vote and we knew what the risks were involved, but we did it anyway and it worked out. So we'll continue to go with that power. You know, the data and resources is an ongoing, that's why there's only two items there. We're going to continue to look at our health data, we're going to look, talk to our Leo counsel, we're going to get feedback, that's a data source, obviously. But to me, right now, more importantly, most importantly is the left side. We're going to communicate, we're going to engage, we're going to plan. And those things have to happen for us to get to a good place as a community, to feel good about where we're headed and make the right decision. I said we met with the health department earlier today. We had another school district east of us or west of us join us who hasn't made a decision yet. The health department does follow IDPH and CDC. So if you're wondering where the health department is on, they're in line with the recommendations of CDC and IDPH and will continue to do so unless told otherwise. They are anxiously waiting, the information that comes out from IDPH, the FAQ, to see if there's anything different from them, but we will continue to communicate. They will be present at next week's forum. They are also going to reach out to IDPH to see if they're represented from IDPH can be present, just to have a frame of reference for our community members and for the board eventually. So that's coming, obviously. And look, you know, whatever those things are for mitigation strategies that we have to plan for to support all students access to in-person learning. You know, you heard the parent receiving the student, that struggle last year because of their unique needs. That's not insignificant. You know, that weighs on me a lot as a former special ed teacher, as a former, current educator. You know, one kid is, it's, you know, that's not enough, we can't meet the needs of one student. So how do we, how do we take all those considerations? It's not just about the conversation of our district as a whole. It is about those unique students and, you know, we have to plan for that. We have to be thinking of that and through our dialogue. And that's just one story of one student and one parent. I know there's hundreds of them. So that sentence, that's an I tell size, that's important to me, that's important to us, and I know it's important to this board. And how do we do it without quarantining every three weeks and saying, okay, you know, we're unmasked, that's great, but now we're quarantining 25 kids for 10 days? Or we are masked, we're quarantined, or everyone has options of a quarantine. And that's, that's something we, it's a reality. So we have to make sure the least disruptions possible piece is important too, because every day the student's not here is a day they don't get to interact with a teacher from a social, emotional standpoint as well as an academic standpoint. We need kids connected with adults. We need to hang with each other. I'll say it over and over again. We missed that last year. And then formalizing plans for any screen testing. We do have opportunities to test kids twice a week if we want to do that, either as options or required, or again, I'm not saying one way or the other. The option is out there. We talked to the health department today about it. If they have the tests available to us, they're checking with a C. We'd love to take the health department out of it if that's the direction we went so we can get them directly to us. But again, no decision's been made. It's just, we need to get all of the information, know all our answers to our questions so at least we know what we're dealing with, to have options. Because then we can come to a group and talk about those things. Well, if we do this, then we can do this. Maybe if we do this, we don't have to wear masks or we could, you know, there's just, there's different versions of the way we can go after this as a community to make the best possible decision. I am open to questions or Melinda or Pete or anyone else on this team, or if you have things that you want to make sure that I go back and address, or do you have questions that point you on you that you want to make sure are answered? I can assure the board, I am meeting with superintendents weekly across the state. I had a meeting this morning with 20 superintendents and Leo counsel and people at the state level. That will continue. We will continue with the health department and obviously we'll continue to engage with our community. And as a community, I would ask that you continue to engage with us. If you have questions, if you hear things, if you have data, if you have, certainly don't be shy. You know, I'm interested and we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one note, we were, we were hoping to have these discussions in June and we were waiting. The state guidelines took a very long time to bring, you know, little clarity that they did bring. So we apologize, but we were, we were ready to have these discussions as early as possible. And so we appreciate your engagement, but you know, we were hoping not to give you such short notice, but we were kind of at the mercy of the state because they took a very long time to get those guidelines out. So then we're going to go back to our agenda order and then next item under new business is our remote learning proposal. Oh, do you want to say something? Oh, yeah, I'll give you a couple of minutes. All right, we're going to do a two-minute stretch. All right, remote learning program.
So the, the remote learning program designed was a product that came out of the scheduling committee as part of our transition committee earlier this year. And this program is designed to provide an alternative virtual learning experience for students that is similar in rigor to an in-person learning experience. One thing that is important to understand and to note is that this is not new learning in the pandemic with the governor's emergency proclamation. There are quite a few different requirements to this remote learning program itself. This program is made possible because we have Board Policy 6185 in place and also is in line with the requirements that are outlined within the Illinois School Code itself. And some of the major differences are with regards to eligibility. And so in the governor's emergency proclamation, we're required as a school district to provide a new learning program. This remote learning program gives us the opportunity to evaluate whether or not this is the right academic fit for all students. So as families submit interest in the remote learning program, we can take a look as an administration and evaluate prior attendance record, prior disciplinary record, prior academic record, and student health needs in order to make a determination whether or not a student would be a right fit for this type of environment. We also have outlined some readiness characteristics that we presented as part of the plan, things like demonstrate active engagement, responsibility, and self-advocacy as well. And so one of the things that is outlined in the school code is the requirement to have an individualized academic education plan for each student. And that's a plan that is developed and designed individually for the student in consultation with a school counselor or building administrator, where they're setting specific academic goals for the, for the students based on their current academic achievement levels. And that's something that three times a year, if we do choose to offer this program, that plan would be monitored and it also would be reviewed. We also are recommending that if the program does run this year, we would require a semester commitment for program participation of the families and then reevaluate after the semester. Last year, we spent a lot of time changing student model and modality based on requests, based on COVID rates increasing or decreasing. But at this time, we would like, we would like to have a commitment of a semester. It helps with staffing, it helps with some continuity for the students as well. If we run a program, students would be eligible to participate in all extracurricular and co-curricular activities. But we also had designed an extension of the Student Parrot Handbook that outlines a remote learning code of conduct that would be specific for remote learners themselves. And so at this time, in the board packet, I did outline some numbers based on student interest and also some financials that could potentially be attached to that. What we'd like to do tonight is approve the remote learning program as presented, but make that separate than all of the financials. That we will bring for further discussion at committee and in August.
So, you know, we've certainly discussed this already and it would probably be wise though, just in case we decide to go with the higher possible recommendation, that you have the ability to interview people that are saying, you know, we have against the law, you know, we have to, we have to. So we're not saying avoid or approve those positions, but we are saying you should approve as knowing that it's a possible scenario.
Thank you. I appreciate the latitude to prepare for this approval.
Yeah, I think it's important to make the statement that, I mean, this is really online learning that is best practice, right? So this is really, this is highly impactful, remote learning, it comes with all the accountabilities post-COVID restrictions or guidelines, where we really are going to offer a dynamic, engaging e-learning experience and we're trying to build experts in that field specific to this modality. So I think that's important for the public because it is a viable modality for many students. Many students will thrive in this modality.
Absolutely.
And it can be really flexible and optional and allow them to also build their skills. I mean, we just saw how many students that just layered three or four languages on top of, you know, so it's, it's, it's an exciting conversation to have. It's not stopping here because it means we could offer all sorts of classes and programs this way in a mix and match. So it's exciting.
Thank you for seeking.
So the way this is worded, you have.
No, we're going to hash that.
So why don't you make a motion to approve the second to discuss and then you can modify the motion.
Yes. So we need the original motion.
So the original motion, we're wanting to approve as presented.
Wait a second, for their discussion.
So I modify the motion that has been presented at this stage and as far as accepting the guidelines for remote learning to approve as far as positions required, that will be committee, we have the rights for the interview.
It's okay, it's recorded. I'll play it back.
Second. Speaker of your mind.
Sure.
Is everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so.
Let's hear this one again.
So let's do it again, yeah. All right, so change the motion that we approve the guidelines that are required for rigorous remote learning and we allow for investigation, interviewing of potential candidates for hiring positions, though we are not approving those positions at this time. We will be further discussing this again.
Second. Second, additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Dr. Katula.
Yes.
Mr. Kozlowski.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
And Dr.
Yes.
All right, then we have some extracurricular positions.
Yeah, these, these positions are being proposed by Mr. Ringelhart at the high school with the addition of an assistant boys' and girls' bowling coach and then also the assistant of a boys' soccer coach, both positions to support the junior varsity level. We've seen an increase in the number of participation, students participating in these particular extracurricular activities. It also provides us with an option to provide more playing time for students, which is a good thing to increase participation. So this is the discussion item.
Do you need approval tonight? I mean, would you like approval?
Yes.
I mean, I assume, especially a boys' soccer. Yeah, so, so.
So we could, would you like additional information on that if you need it?
You know, you talked about this before, so I mean, you're just looking for an assistant because of the demand of the programs, right?
Yes, both of these positions were tabled prior to COVID. The discussion began with the proposal. The JV bowling coach, that program is the only program with a JV team that competes at the JV level without a coach designated to it. Where all of our other sports that have a JV team do have a designated level coach and the program numbers and what we've seen from the intermural program at the middle school, they're going to continue to trend to support it. That's the bowling position. The girls' program's a little lower. We want to increase those numbers so that assistant would help the girls' program as well as the boys' program, but primarily be designated to the boys because they compete with a full JV schedule. The soccer numbers, our boys' soccer program numbers are through the roof. They've been really good, even this past truncated spring season. We've been at 73 to 75 last year with 81 kids going out this summer for camp. So that coach, and it would be consistent to what we have with our other team sports like basketball, softball, that have five coaches designated, full-time employee coaches to their programs. And each of those programs have smaller numbers than what we would see with our boys' soccer. So it's really being consistent to what we have with our other programs.
Sorry, can I make a motion? So I'll make, I'll make a motion to, for the addition of an assistant boys' and girls' bowling coach, assistant boys' soccer coach for the upcoming school year.
Soccer.
We've been second additional discussion.
Moved in second, additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Catula.
Yep.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
And Dr. Burks.
Yes.
If I could just say something real quick, speak into the, just the kind of. The rise of the soccer program in terms of the numbers over the past couple of years. Those coaches have done an outstanding job of getting these kids involved, just starting at the junior high level. And I know it starts at the youth level, but this is something that, I mean, my kid's two years out of high school now, and, you know, obviously he played in high school, and the numbers were very small to medium at that point. I would say this district in the past five or six years has just seen that program just go up and up number-wise. So to hear that we're asking for coaches for programs, I don't think anybody in the boards, and probably stating the obvious, but I don't think anybody in the board's ever going to have an issue with that. So that's a big testament to the athletic department and the boys', boys' soccer programs for getting those kids interested, so congratulations.
I appreciate that, too, and I just, as long as Luke is here tonight, I just want to publicly thank him as well. Luke has really, it's been a really hard year, obviously.
This was a hard time serving athletic director.
Yeah, there were very few days where Luke wasn't here, seven days a week. And when he wasn't here, he was taking phone calls and, you know, he never complained. He, he always had the best interest of kids and coaches and our brand and our district in mind, and just a huge thanks and effort. I mean, you did a great job, Luke, and we're very fortunate we had you meeting our program this year. Thanks, Luke.
Oh, it's because you come from good genes.
No, and just, you know, you talk about social emotional health. I mean, just how important it was for kids at every level to be able to do heaven out with like that, so.
The financial part of this, they'll cover later.
So. All right, Jason threw me off. All right. So moving on, thank you. So now we have. We have executive session. You need that all, please.
The motion to approve the opening of the executive session minutes is listed below, and for the following executive session minutes to remain closed, April 7th, 1982, May 10th, 1982, May 24th, 1982, February 14th, 1984, January 14th, 1985.
Second. Moving in second, additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
And Dr. Burks.
Yes. Then add to personnel recommendations. Somebody need a motion, please?
Motion to approve the additional positions for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Moved in second, additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
You betcha.
Ms. Shields.
Yes. Then we have interim human resources services. Somebody need a motion, please?
Motion to approve the interim human resources services contract for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second. Moved in second, additional discussion. You can't obviously leave. Roll call, please.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields. And Dr. Burks.
Yes. Then we have co-curricular hires.
Motion to approve the co-curricular hires as presented. Second.
Moved in second, any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
And Dr. Burks.
Yes. Then we have some resignations.
Motion to approve the resignations as presented. Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Then we have some summer school hires.
Motion to approve the hires as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
And Dr. Burks.
Yes. Then we have some transfers.
Motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Need a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
I just want to comment, I know Reggie Olson's in the audience there. And I think from a district perspective, we're going to be so fortunate, both from an instructional standpoint, but also from a relationship building standpoint, culture and climate standpoint. Reggie, you've been magnificent in your role as a teacher. I'm really excited for your opportunity to share that with other staff and other kids, so excited for your good decision, whoever you are.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Dr. Burks.
Yes. And then we have the last set of hires.
Motion to approve the hires as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion. Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Dr. Burks.
Yes. And then on to old business, and we have some policies on display.
Motion to place the attention to 2015 Board of Education policies on display as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Then we have assistant network administrator.
Yeah, this position was presented by Mr. Atkins on the 28th of June to add another individual to his department to help support the current network administrator. There was some conversation about this. We have posted this on various social media outlets and also on Indeed, and have had over 30 applicants thus far with the hope to bring a recommendation to the board in early August.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve the assistant network administrator as presented. Second.
Moved in second, any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yep.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Dr. Burks.
Yes. And then we also have another computer technician, security Ryan, also came to the board and tapped out this position as well.
On the 28th, it was part of his three-year plan. Just to note that this is not the added FTU positions that responsibilities with an increased rate of pay.
So we need a motion, please?
Motion to approve the computer technology and security position as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Dr. Burks. Yes. Then we have an early childhood preschool for all classroom.
This was also discussed on the 28th, is new business, receiving a motion to approve the expansion of the classroom. I also know that Mrs. Maynard is back there, Cory in the corner, early childhood coordinator, and Mrs. Luck here have put in a lot of work in order to prepare for this potential approval.
Motion to approve the addition of one preschool for all classroom as presented. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
And Dr. Burks.
Yes. And then last, we have a one-to-one parapro position.
Motion to approve the one-to-one paraprofessionals as presented.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second, any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Schumacher.
Yes.
Mr. Sefner.
Yes.
Dr. Brenner.
Yes.
Dr. Catula.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
And Dr. Burks.
Yes.
And then we have superintendent board communication.
Yep, it'll be very brief. One, just a reminder to the board, Thursday this week, we are beginning our board summer work session at 7:38 is breakfast, it'll be at 6:04. We'll be together till about 9:15-ish, just as the board, and then our administrative team will join the group about 9:15, 9:30 to talk about some student growth and achievement, SEL, some of our financial outlook, and then we'll wrap up the time they're going to talk about academic freedom and the work behind that, as well as the alumni wall thing discussion as a continuation. I'll be sending information out to the board tomorrow by noon. You're also going to be receiving some student achievement data, although we're not going to get in the weeds in depth about it on Thursday, you'll have it. So if you have follow-up questions or need some discussions on Thursday, that would be fine. Also, we are in conversation, we've had a couple different meetings, Cory and Melinda and Nick and I, and who else? High school and sometimes Emily, and have been talking just about looking at partnering with the city, providing a kind of a preschool program, if you will. Have some possibilities at the high school, others been involved from a facility standpoint. I know there's been, they've had some discussions at the city level about using the library, and I just kind of moved away from that, but, so we are looking at options that would complement our high school program, when you talk about education, career program. So we're doing a lot of planning around that. Stephanie's gotten involved with Melinda and Cory to create a project plan. See, Stephanie just smiles, she's just creating all these plans for everybody to run around with. But that's, that's exciting work. We're excited to partner with the city and really some build that program and some opportunities for both our little ones, obviously in our community, but also for our high school students as we find more ways to engage our alumni to go on education, hopefully come back and serve our district in the future.
Well, I think too, I mean, we have, you know, because we depend on grants, fragmented early childhood grants, if we could take control of that, take a holistic approach and get learners engaged earlier, it just, the long-term success of that, so that's, that's exciting. I think Wobonci has a nice, or some program as well, or COD or something as well, but that's exciting.
Yeah, part of that work is through a grant with Wobonci and some other school districts, looking at the lab classroom development, and there's really a lot of possibilities coming down the road in the next few years. We are going to be meeting with Gail Arquette over the next few weeks, soon as they finalize what they see as the year coming for Evolution 115. I'll be bringing that back to the board, likely at the August 9th committee meeting, and then again at the full board meeting in August. Again, Stephanie will be involved in kind of laying that out, and I'm working with Christine and possibly some others on, from a communication standpoint and a community buying stakeholder standpoint. And summer's gone by really quick. Thinking about our elementary principals will be coming back, and our administrator's August 9th, I believe, so that's not too far away, and new teacher orientation's going to be coming up, and Nate and Leslie have jumped right in. They've showed up every day, so that's good. They're still smiling. But all is, all is well. Rachel's back in town after her vacation from a union president standpoint, so we'll be getting together soon, talking about, you know, our negotiations with our union coming up this year. We're looking forward to that opportunity and getting to a good place in a short period of time together.
There's no closed sessions?
No closed sessions.
So need a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Moved in second.
I was just praying.